I just heard the name. Yeah. Okay. It's a friend of mine. She has a nice shirt. It's a little good for her.
Call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting on water for Tuesday, December 13th, 2016 at 7:02 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every consent as one.
Mayor Duty?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Armin?
Here.
Counselor Candelora?
Here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Manna?
Here.
Counselor Miller?
Here.
Counselor Rose?
Motion to approve the minutes of November 15th, 2016.
To move.
Second.
Correct. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armin?
Epstein.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move item 9A up on the, from the agenda, the proclamation for Lauren Danner up to, at the beginning of the meeting right now before we go into the WPCA meeting.
A second.
Second.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armin?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Lauren, thank you for coming. We have a proclamation here for you. It's Lauren Danner Day in the town of North Branford, Connecticut. Whereas Lauren did, Danner began her professional career as a scientist in the private sector, she soon learned that she is a great storyteller and better suited for the classroom than the lab. And whereas Lauren Danner has worked for the North Branford School System for the past seven years, she has excelled at teaching science at the high school level and truly believes her students can achieve anything that they set their minds to. And whereas Lauren Danner has a unique ability to explain complex subject matter to her students, her impact has been recognized by her peers with the nomination as Teacher of the Year in Connecticut. And whereas Lauren Danner was one of the hundred district nominees, fifteen semifinalists, four finalists, her talents, dedication, and passion for teaching propelled her to the most deserved honor, Connecticut Teacher of the Year for 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that December 13th, 2016 shall be known as the Lauren Danner Day in the town of North Branford, Connecticut. On behalf of the Town Council and my powers granted in me by the Town Charter, I hereby congratulate Ms. Danner on being awarded Connecticut Teacher of the Year, dated this the 13th of December, 2016, authorized by my signature affixed. Along with, uh, Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, they want you to come on the other side.
Should we vote bomb that?
I am a resident of the town as well as, of course, a teacher in the town, and it has been such a wonderful experience and an honor to work in such a wonderful community. The outpouring of support and love has been tremendous. We're just want to thank you to everyone of you and all of our community members.
Sure.
Thank you. If you don't want to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, you can go.
That's why we moved it up for you.
Until we appoint you to some border commission.
You could make it by final jeopardy if you move.
I will move into the Water Pollution Control Authority, correspondence, citizen's statements, and petitions under cor, under water pollution. None. Unfinished business, there's nothing. New business, there's nothing. Citizen's statements and petitions underwater pollution control, there's nothing. Move into the regular Town Council agenda. Reports of boards, commissions, and committees. Economic Development Commission.
Last night Liz Kaplan, I, and Chris Kranek met with Shoreline Chamber of Commerce to discuss different ways we could further get the word out to business that we are now members of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce. They are also in the process of evaluating their mailer that they recently have received back to business. And they're going to be talking about scheduling a breakfast for business as well.
The Shoreline Chamber also held a economic and legislative forum on the first of December to which we were all invited, and I attended it at the Stony Creek Brewery. It was a terrific event, and I think that we're going to be impressed with the services and the support that the Shoreline Chamber is giving our businesses.
That's good. Thank you. Next is Park and Recreation Commission.
Park and Rec had a, just a tremendous event with the Christmas tree lighting on Route 22 at the Augertown property. And I think there probably were several three or 400 people. Just an outstanding event that Park and Rec did, and anyone who missed it really missed a good opportunity, so I look forward to it again next year.
Who donated the tree?
The Rotary bought it, and then Christensen Landscaping planted it.
Thank you.
Next is the Police Commission.
Police Commission met yesterday. Couple of highlights. The two new vehicles are in service, but it's also interesting to note that there are still six cars, still six police cars that have over 100,000 miles. And the department, just in the last month, spent $3,000 in repairs. So it's something I'm sure that the Police Commission will be coming to us in terms of the budget and cars. Many of the, there were pages and pages of training, recertification that some of the policemen have gone through. It's very impressive to see the amount of training that they've been having. The fence and the gate, I know Franny's going to fix the fence, but there's still the issue with the gate. And if it's okay in the consensus of the council, hopefully by January, Mike will have some information in terms of some bids for the gate itself.
Right, we are pursuing that. We had to, as per the council, check with the state on that. They have not responded. We're going to go forward as though it, we will be eligible project. We'll go off the state, probably off the state bid if we can to accelerate it, and I'll have some numbers for you in the January meeting.
Because I think one of the quotes they had, but it included fence, what is one of the companies that's on the state list, but I know that you have to look into that.
Yeah.
And the other, the other important issue is, the commission received two requests from residents for signage or traffic lights. And unfortunately, in both cases, they would want these on state roads, one on Luntville and one on Route 80. One of the residents is here tonight, David Gottscheck. He's here to ask for support from the council. Even though the Police Commission is the traffic authority in town, it's very difficult to get the state to agree to put a traffic light on a state road. And I know he's here to talk to you about the possibility of getting some kind of a letter of support in addition to the Police Commission get one from the Town Council. The area on Route 80 where the accident occurred, it was quite interesting to hear that within just this past year, there were seven accidents. And since 1995, there have been 45 to 50 accidents at that site. So he is going, I'm sure that David is going to speak to you at length or give you some detail when it comes time for public comment, but it's, he is looking for some support. The other one is, some parents are looking for signs on Route 22, and again, that will be a difficult thing because again, the state is kind of slow to move on those issues. But I hope the council will, will receive this request favorably. And I know, again, it is the traffic authority's role, but he's looking for some support from the Town Council, perhaps in the form of a letter.
Marie? My daughter had an accident there not too long ago. I want to thank Anthony for, for his help with her and.
Where on Route 80 is it?
And Cumberland Farms.
Where West Pond is.
Cumberland Farms. And it's, it's like a racetrack, and it's dangerous.
I pull out of it every morning.
I was kind of shocked when I heard the number of accidents.
And I don't want to wait till a fatality because that's usually when people act. I like to avoid that.
Has there been a traffic study done? A few. Yeah. State, the states.
It always comes back because of the number of accidents, or lack thereof.
The state's done it numerous times, and they've, you know, done requests for traffic light, but they don't meet the criteria for vehicles exiting West Pond Road within a certain period of time.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was.
So that, that's it, unless there's more vehicles coming out of there now than there was years ago.
But at night, it's also dark along that corridor. You know, Chris, you see how dark that is.
There's no reason to go down there if you can avoid it, and it's avoidable by everyone in the area by going down the rest of Sea Hill to that intersection or going up to Beach. When you know you have a difficult intersection and you can avoid it, you do, and the residents do routinely.
Can we hear from the general?
Can we hear from the general?
I covered that under citizen's statements and petitions, if you want.
Try.
I mean, next is Fire Commission. I didn't make that one. Anthony, is there any update on the, nothing on the ambulances or anything? Okay. Board of Education, Town Council Sub, Communications Subcommittee?
Our next meeting, we kind of meet quarterly, so it's not until like March.
Okay. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met on November 29th, and what the committee's trying to do is to fine tune and to identify those areas within the police facility that are in the most dire need of some kind of renovation or expansion. We'd like to be able to share that information with the council in January, and hopefully by that time, if you remember, Dave Palumbo made a presentation in November about the possibility of talking to the Fire Commission about moving the ambulance facility to have a combined facility, but he has not had that meeting yet. Hopefully he'll have that before our January meeting.
Public Safety Communications Committee?
Public Safety Communications Meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM in the Town Manager's Council, Conference Room.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Did not meet last week for lack of a quorum.
East Shore Health District Commission?
We're still short a member. Mike, are you updated on that? Do we, are we any closer to getting another member?
No, we thought we had someone identified, but apparently doesn't meet the criteria of, you know, being a town resident for, for service on the, on the health board. So it'll be up to the community or anybody listening or watching tonight's meeting if they're interested to, you know, go through the channels of each party and look for, look for somebody that might be.
There's also a Christmas party, which Mike was there as well as I, and the topic of discussion was the state's possible plans to regionalize the health districts. I don't know how many there are in the state now, but some, like Madison has their own. There is plans to condense it to seven throughout the state.
Rampers consists of what towns? North Rampers?
East Haven, Branford, and North Branford. We tried to get Madison, when their director retired, they elected to go have their own one-town health district. If the state gets their way, there's a possibility that there'll only be seven throughout the state, which will take away local control, and there'll be, might be added expense. So it's a while away, but people are concerned. Would you agree?
Absolutely, yeah. And Mike Pascasilla is monitoring that, is attending the meetings because it would be a significant increase, a potential increase in terms of the consolidation and of course, you know, control in terms of span, in terms of activities and so forth. It's a very, very alarming proposal, to say the least, so.
Because if we align with a city as big as the haven.
We get lost.
Our next item is Town Manager's Report. Report on ATV activity and knock-and-talk program with Regional Water Authority.
Yes, I have a, a report submitted by Captain Nessie. As I mentioned, you know, last meeting, we undertook this program that the captain had brought and put into practice and rolled it out and paired up one of their officers from the RWA with one of our officers and went knocking on, on houses and talking about the issue as part of one of their, you know, community policing type of methodologies and, and, you know, just outreach and to talk about the issues. And happy to report that they were very successful, and the report is in your, in your packet, but they did three, three outreaches or three walks, I guess, Saturday, November 12th, Monday, November 14th, and November 21st. And happy to report that they were able to reach 16 different households and, and talk about the, the impact and concerns that they have in terms of activity. And, and I think it's a great opportunity to continue the dialogue in terms of community response. So as far as I know, the, the program will continue to be ongoing and that they'll have some success in trying to curb the illegal activity that, that's happening with, within the town and the borders. And I know council is aware of the town itself, with, with its own property and the Auger Field had significant issues with damage to that property. And I believe two years ago, the police department was able to capture, you know, apprehend someone, and they, they paid a significant fine for that piece. But that, that's only been one arrest in, in several years. So hopefully that the word and message will get out that the RWA and our police force are pairing up to monitor the situation.
Thank you. Update on Town Car 15 and Plow Truck for Public Works Department?
Yes, you have some information in, in your packet, but essentially, the mechanic is still working on Car 15. It was identified just as a head gasket issue. I'm told by Fran that that car should be on the road by next week. Right now, the problem delay is in, in terms of not only the workload that they have, but parts that were ordered and backordered. So that should be, again, next week, hopefully. We anticipate that. But a larger issue on top of that is Plow Truck 56 that was, is now out of commission because of a transmission issue, and Fran can certainly speak to it, but I think his feeling is that it's not, it's not worthy in terms of investment. There, obviously, they sent it out, they got an evaluation on it, and it's back in service, and they can use it to, to limited degree, but it's not worth the investment because it's more than just the transmission, the body on it. This is a 1995 Ferguson, is that what it is?
Freightliner.
I'm sorry, freightliner. And so Fran can answer any questions you may have, but I think going forward, there's a major capital expenditure in terms of item that, that we'll be looking at as we approach the next budget season, so unfortunately.
Fran, what can it do? And what can it do?
Well, the transmission's bad, so it can't move. We're going to keep it as just a backup truck, just in case if one goes down, we can send somebody else. It's limited to a couple of years, that's it. But it's an automatic transmission with the Allison, it's over 10,000 just for transmission. And the body that's on the truck has got, would have to, it was going to get replaced, it was going to be in the budget anyway, but now it's just, you have to defer it as well.
So do you have enough plow trucks for the season?
Yeah, however, yeah, we're going to use that, and it's just because of like, we use it, we're going to have a different backup, and I have another smaller truck that we can use if something goes down. As long as it's not catastrophic, it's catastrophic, then we have a problem the next month. So we'll be all right.
Okay. And just in, in terms of magnitude and the order, it's, it's a, it's an item that's 100, usually 150 to 200.
250,000.
250, sorry, 250,000.
How long does it take to get one when you have to order and?
A year.
A year?
Probably, if we, if you, if we bought it by July, probably we might get it by December of next year, Mike.
Would it be who of us looking into a used one by any chance?
No. Not going down that street again.
Okay.
So that's what it is.
Okay.
I built many trucks. I should say it's not worth it, is it cheaper way out yet, but that's the problem, are we keep doing that?
We're also looking at a year lead time.
Yeah.
That's a long time to nurse these other trucks along.
But it's important to have the program, replace the programs. We have an old fleet, we just started, you guys just started buying new ones just in the last two, two years. But we're on, we're, that's a 90, that's a 95, we're 96, we got trucks that are 86s, 87s.
Is this a bid situation for this, this replacement truck?
Yeah.
Next is Pending Contract Renewal with John's Refuse and Negotiations.
Yes, this item I, I mentioned a few times and wanted to again bring to your attention the fact that the contract for John's will expire on June 30th, 2017, and per contract, we are to notify them by the 28th, end of February 28th, as to whether or not we're going to renew the contract. So the Solid Waste Recycling Committee has been monitoring and evaluating and trying to pass along some information to me in terms of, of what their feelings are with the respective committee that has knowledge of this. And I, I had misspoken in my, my statement in terms of my memo, they actually think it would be good to go out to bid, but in reviewing and looking at the contract and discussing it with Pat, I, I think there's some obligation to get to the table to negotiate, and I think we have an opportunity to negotiate. We still have some time, and I'd like to pursue that angle of getting to the table with John's and negotiate first, and looking at, at bidding as the, obviously, an option that we would have as a fallback to send that out. So if there are any objections to that, I would like to proceed with that and certainly would welcome any member from the council to join me in the negotiation. The solid waste recycling is, Tom Scavell is very knowledgeable and has volunteered his time to sit down on those negotiations, but to talk about not only obviously the auto, keeping the automated system and recycling, but also in terms about, you know, changing the language in terms of reporting and some of the other things that they're concerned about or would like to see improved as we go forward into another multi-year contract. So I don't know how the council feels, but that's, that's the way I'd like to go at this point.
I, I think it's beneficial to do a contract extension. You know, I mean, we don't get hardly any complaints.
Right.
They're, they're very clean, they pick up, you know.
So you're looking to negotiate with them prior to the four-month notice that you would have to give them if we decided not to extend the contract?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think, I think looking at it and say that if, you know, we begin in, in January, I don't think this is going to be very, very complicated, you know, we just look and say, hey, are we going to be able to come to terms and negotiate, or are we going to be at, wow, they want something, you know, that we just can't, can't afford? Then the fallback would be, we still have time to get this out to bid and turn around a number, because essentially what we're going to need is a number for the budget process, so that's a, that's a huge, huge number. I mean, what we, what we do know is it costs us 800, or this year's contract ended at 828,000 and change, and that's, that's a big number. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to get to, to the table and start talking with them about renegotiating, and, and under the contract, it would be for a two-year, two-year period.
And Tom will be able to join you with that? And, and, Tom?
Yeah, Tom, yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. He's already offered.
I, I would like to do it with you, as a Town Council person.
Okay, great.
So if I recall, in the first, the first five years of this, because we went to the automated, and I believe, did the town purchase the Toters?
No, they didn't.
But at, but at the end of the five years, the, they are the Towns.
Right.
Correct? Is that how it went?
Correct. I believe that for a dollar, we, we can purchase those, correct?
Okay. So they would be our Toters then, at the end of the con, at the end of this contract?
Right.
Several months ago, John's had a memo in, into the council to substantially change part of their pickup. Is that something they're, they're putting out on this negotiation?
They're definitely going to want to discuss it. That's been an issue. We raised it a number of times, which is bulk pickup on a regular basis as opposed to, to isolated weeks during the year.
Right. That is, that would be a major, major issue, I think.
That's a major issue, yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. Rose, I'll, I'll talk to you about dates.
Okay.
Next item is upcoming Ask Me contract negotiations, January, February start.
Yes, the collective bargaining contracts are up June 30th, 2017 as well. So I'm just, you know, giving a heads up that I'm going to get together, get some dates. We've already reached out, are reaching out to Ask Me to try and get something started in January, so that we can get that underway. Rose had asked and requested that copies, that you see those copies, so I'll be dropping those into the, into the Dropbox after tonight. I didn't want to mix the agenda with that, so I'll put those in so that you can see sort of the baseline of where we're starting, starting from in terms of the current contracts that we're in.
So which ones are up?
All, all the, we've got clerical, public works, library, and police.
Okay. So would this, I, I know we're currently, on the Board of Ed side, they're currently doing negotiations with the teachers, which is really a basis for a lot of the insurance. I mean, that's the basis of our insurance cost here. I just have one question in regard to this, because that might, this might correlate with that, with these four contracts coming up, is how often does the town go out to bid on the healthcare? Or do we just take whatever Anthem? Does, does HD Seeger, because I believe they're our agent of record, do they go out to bid, or do they just take what Anthem gives us?
We, we explored that several years ago, and at the time, I don't remember the exact year, maybe the year four, maybe five years ago now, there was a slight savings if we chose to go from, I think it was Stig at the time, I don't remember who the other carrier was. We looked at it and said the amount of disruption that it would take to achieve so little savings at the time wasn't worthwhile for still. No one really can match apples to apples. Anthem's network, Anthem's benefits, I think it matched the benefits more or less, but the network is very specific to Anthem in most cases. So all it would take would be to say, you're a doctor, you've been there for 20 years, there's not any plan X. It'd be difficult for you to switch to Dr. D W and say, and it wasn't, there was some savings, but honestly, but it wasn't worth the amount of disruption that potentially could be caused by that. They do explore it. The problem is if you. apples to apples. Anthem's network, Anthem's benefits, I think it matched the benefits more or less, but the network is varied, specific to Anthem in most cases. So all it would take would be to say, you're a doctor, you've been there for twenty years, there's not any plan X. It'd be difficult for you to switch to Doctor D W and say, and it wasn't, there was some savings, but honestly, but it wasn't worth the amount of disruption that potentially could be caused by that. They do explore it. The problem is if you dangle that out there, it'd be so often, we're gonna jump carriers, jump carriers, they basically ignore you because we never jump carriers. Again, the coverage that Anthem provides us is pretty good, the benefits are really good, and no one can really match it, apples to apples per se. So the answer is yeah, we have explored it in the past, we'd never like to pursue it because the amount of the savings didn't offset the amount of the potential disruption that it could cause.
But now that we're self-insured, would that make a difference?
Uh, no, same, the same network situation would still exist. We could, we could, my goal, I've talked to Mike today, my goal is probably to have someone, if you remember from Seeger situation, the government, which way last year has passed, a person now who's in charge of our account, plenty of having back before you guys, like in January, talk about the whole risk corridor process and where we are, the results of last year were very favorable, but getting away forward where we wanna be. So maybe, hold on, January, we can, we might all want happy discussion in January if we want to.
Okay.
Probably answer the bid, or situation. But yeah, it's us, you know, we're denting our all package together, and we, we have.
Right, but the biggest, the biggest path, package is negotiating right now.
That's true.
So, so that's why I raised the question, because, you know, if, if they switch, or whatever they're looking at to do, then it's almost like the rest have to follow suit because that's the biggest one on there. So if, and if they don't switch, then there's really no point in the other groups looking at it.
Are they, are they pursuing?
I have no idea. I'm not on, I'm not on.
I'm having discussions, it's, you know, on the path, but I mean, certainly, certainly could go out and explore. Again, but the fear or the concern is if you keep saying, oh, we're gonna sharpen your pencil, sharpen your pencil, they say, we're not gonna come up and bid, and why should we sharpen your pencil?
Well, that's why you don't do it every year.
Right. We haven't done it for several years.
But it's, but it's good practice to do it, I mean, I know private industry, I, I did it for many years. It was, you did it at least every three years, you would go out to look at it, to see once. And for the very same reason as why you wouldn't do it. I mean, I know we looked at the state when the state came in a number of years, I don't know if that was three to five years ago, and to go with the state plan, and that just got worse every time they came in to talk to us, and we all agreed that we would never go to that plan on there because of, they couldn't guarantee anything, and you were locked in for ten years, and just.
But that's actually still alive and well, that plan, believe it or not.
Right. I know.
Some of the towns that have jumped on to that state plan.
So, and that's the last that I remember that we looked at insurance was when the state came in and talked to us about it.
You're correct.
Okay.
Twenty fourteen?
Thank you, Anthony. Update on N B I S roof?
Yes, we are making progress. I had a brief memo in the packet to let you know that Eagle Rivet was finishing up. In fact, confirmed with Bill Chody today that Eagle Rivet has finished their work on the roof. So Bill is waiting for another rain event to, to look at things. However, there, there is another document in your packet, it's a highlighted green and yellow and red, yes, thank, yeah, that's supplied by Principal Davis. There are still some issues. I don't know that there membrane, you know, roof membrane issues, or if there are some, you know, window or flashing issues, but there are still some issues, and, and Bill's gonna try, Bill Chody's gonna try and pinpoint after a next rain event whether those, you know, everything else is okay and those, those persist. So, you know, it just, it's gonna take some time, and I think we'll probably call Bruce Darling back in as well and tell, to troubleshoot those, those issues. And that, that's mainly the concern at this point, to try and pinpoint what the source may be now that we've got Eagle Rivet to finish all of those items that were identified on the roof membrane.
So these are, these four major leak identifications were never on Eagle's list?
Yeah, they, no, they were, they were, they were identified as, you know.
Issues, right.
Right, where water's coming in. Now, now, I mean, some of it was, was still coming in, we hadn't, I think it was D Wing that was the last piece that Eagle Rivet had, had, had finished with. So now that, you know, we've got the entire envelope finished, if, we're gonna wait and see if, where, where this, where the leaks pop up. And, you know, it may still be some roof issues, but it may be other issues. Let me give you an example. I mean, part of, part of the, part of the issue over the principal's office and that, in that direction, that area, towards, I guess it called the front of the building, facing the parking lot there, is it could potentially be just a rain-driven event where it's coming in through the windows, or somewhere else up in, in terms of the masonry work, and not a, you know, Firestone membrane roof issue, is what I'm saying. So that's gonna be the difficult part in terms of trying to, you know, investigate and, and try to pinpoint that source, so.
And who's gonna do that? Who's gonna, right, that was, as major leak continues?
Yeah, we're, well, through, with Bruce Darling, bringing him back in, who was the consultant that we hired to bring in, and also to, to, again, to confirm with, with Firestone to say, hey, listen, you know, there's, depending on what, what we see and where it shows up, where it manifests itself, we're gonna try and, and rule out that there are anything else with Firestone, and make sure that that work was, you know, up there and completed. You know, it's just, just finished, I think, on probably Friday, but.
So these leaks were, Firestone wasn't done when these leaks were noted, that was the last rainstorm?
Right.
And then Fires, they had to come back, and so they just, they finished the work after this rain event? Oh, after this, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's why it wasn't, yeah, that's, they just finished, so that's why they need to wait for the next rain event.
Okay, good.
To see if that corrected the work that they finished.
So the neighbors, they observed these four conditions, is that right? That's my question, is they observed?
There's actually, there's five of them there.
Or five?
Yeah. They were all, they were all known, these, I don't think those aren't, those aren't new, but the, the issue is they were sort of moving, you know, east to west, north to south, whatever it was, across the building, regardless of where, where Firestone was in terms of the end of the building, they've already passed over the hallway that says the hallway by library, and I think over the, the principal's office. So we've still got issues, we've still got problems that we've gotta pinpoint, figure out, you know, is it flashing, is it masonry, is it window? And we're gonna have to, you know, do the best we can and pull in whoever we need to, to pull in to try and pinpoint the source and pinpoint the problem.
I presume if we have a snowstorm, terrible snowstorm, that's gonna add to the problem, right?
Well, I mean, whatever precipitation comes, comes, and, and, you know, we'll track it. So I'll, I'll continue to have this item as a, as a report for the, for the next meeting, and hope that we're gonna keep knocking these off the list.
Thank you. Next item is community events and presentations. We, as the town council, received a presentation from the North Branford Fire Department. We would like to recognize and thank the North Branford Town Council for their support and believing in funding the North Branford Fire Training Facility. They had a dedication on November nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. So the council received a plaque, very nice plaque.
Thank you.
It was a very nice program, too, by the way, the dedication, it was pretty well-attended, and a lot of community interest.
Okay, next item is citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Citizen statements.
Sir, if you wanna talk about that traffic accident, after Mr. Potter's done, feel free.
Yes. Good evening. I'd like to talk to you about multi-waste, and I'm not talking about what's around my midriff here. I'm talking about what's gonna be coming down the road when we do get together with John and Refuse. We're one of the few towns that doesn't have any kind of dumping facilities for citizens. North Haven, they have their dump, Guilford's got their transfer station. If you mess too much with the multi-waste pickup, nobody's gonna wait six months to get rid of a mattress. They're gonna go up to Tucker Road, they're gonna go Woodhouse Avenue, unmanned roads, and then four towns who's gonna become a multi-waste pickup. You really have to keep the program, at least at that level, where they make arrangements, I mean, and I, I had a new neighborhood move in, and they handle it very well. Both the old neighbors have to stuff out, and they were very prompt about leaving it, getting it out of the way. And when the new neighborhood moved in, they had, you know, worked it out. But if you don't have that available, you're just opening a door for random dumping on our town roads, and once it happens, people say, wow, look, the, the place, look, somebody put a couch right there. Well, a lot of bedroom set. You know, so I think you really have to concentrate hard on that, because we don't have an alternative. We depend on John's to get rid of the big multi-waste. And if that's not available, people are gonna take drastic measures into their own hands, and twice a year is not, not soon enough to, because people don't have room to store stuff they want discarded. So, I mean, that should be one of the higher priorities. I mean, the trash pickup itself is, you know, kind of cut and dry, you can get pretty much any vendor to do it. And the fact that John's is a local business, if they become more prosperous, which they're, you know, they, they run their business well, they buy trucks, they pay taxes on those trucks, too, back into our, our bankroll here. So again, I know legally, we've gone through this, you can't show favoritism to a local business, I don't believe, but their performance has spoken so well for itself, that really, you haven't had the issues like when we had somebody from Manchester, I forget what that service, that was a nightmare. You didn't even know if they're gonna show up, some of these, their trucks are broken down. So, I mean, keep it local, and, and seriously, the solid waste should be a real big issue because if it's not done with properly, we're gonna just seal all of it down. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Dodgeak. I live in North Branford, Sixteen Olson Road. I wanna, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I wanna thank Michael Paulus for his time recently, and our discussions about what I'm gonna get into very shortly. I would also thank council member Chris Martin for coming over to us and speaking to us a little bit about his personal experience at the state intersection. Marie Diamond, thank you very much for your time last night as well. By the way, I met Marie at the police council meeting last night. That being said, the meeting last night was, was wonderful, and the support I've received, and that we've received as a family, has been very, very positive. What I wanna speak about is this, this intersection at Cumberland Farms, West Pond Road North extension and West Pond South extension, Cumberland Farms being the central player in this. The intersection there is, is a danger, is a danger to everybody. It shouldn't take a personal incident to, to get to this point where maybe some movement would be made toward a stoplight or better signage in that area. The, I've witnessed it myself. I've been here eight and a half years. I'm not originally from here. My fiancee, Katley Highland, is a lifelong resident here. Her parents, Doris and Clarence Highland, have been here for their life as well. But I've been here eight and a half years. I'm originally from West Coast, and when I moved here, the first thing I thought about, I was, was a part, partially a, a work-related transfer. And I love this town, and when I worked, when I lived here, I just said, I couldn't believe this traffic backup. And I almost had a couple near misses myself. I said, you know, this happens anywhere, there's, there's gotta be a better way around this. I, I've talked to the previous town manager, a couple town managers ago. I've talked to some of the police officers in the penalty. It's a state road, nothing could be done. Something's gotta be done, because next time, hopefully, there won't be a next time, but next time it could affect everybody. Just that accident itself backed up traffic one mile in each direction, backed up west going toward Guilford, excuse me, east going toward Guilford, west going toward Route twenty-two. Traffic was backed up as far as town line liquor, I'm sure you all know about this. The, the incidents that, that happens there, it, it's so avoidable. You have six different opportunities for an accident there. You've got Route eighty, east and west, you've got West Pond, West Pond Road, south and north, and you have the Cumberland Farm drivers going in and out. It's not only a danger to the drivers, but it's a danger in spring and summer when you have pedestrians, when you have bicycle tourists coming to the town. It's a danger, it's a danger to everybody. I could be filling up my tank at Cumberland Farms, and our car can have a near miss and plow right into the, to the gas station. So it's, it's a huge hazard, and it's something so avoidable, that it's a three-mile stretch from Long Hill Road in Guilford until twenty-two, approximately three miles, give or take.
Two and a half.
Is that what it is?
Yes, it is.
Two and a half miles?
What would you like us to do, Davis?
I would like a stoplight placed at that intersection of West Pond Road, south and north. And in the short term, I would like better signage in that area, including enhanced street signs showing the, the speed limit, and perhaps even lowering the speed limit. I know that's a state, state law, it's forty-five. On any given day, you can drive that, and it's about fifteen, people are going on average fifteen to twenty-five miles quicker or faster than the speed limit allows. I would also like to see this, the police department put in a digital signage type of, there, I, I forget, again, there's a name for it, but these little remote kiosks, if you will, with speed limits or speed enhancing type of messaging, not enhancing speed, curbing type of messaging, that would further curtail the speeding or the excessive speed limit that happens there. It is, it, again, average, it's fifteen to twenty-five miles, and that's going toward Guilford. Coming the other way west, they're probably averaging probably ten percent more than that, five to ten miles more an hour than that, because they're coming down off that grade. And people are absolutely flying there.
Well, so I think part of the problem is it's a state road, not a town-owned road. However, you know, I've been told that we can send a letter of recommendation that the state revisit the traffic light issue there, to encourage them to act on it.
I, I just heard Lindsay Candelora's assistant emailed me just later this afternoon, just got the email before I got here, and she said that she has spoken with him. And by the way, as you probably all know, he lives virtually about half, less than probably half a mile from where that happened. So he sees it every day, and he's aware of it. In fact, that day, according to her letter to me tonight, he was observing or was impacted by it, as were many people that particular morning, or last Thursday morning. So I understand that it's a state road, but it goes through the heart of your town. And what I'm asking for is just some support, because I believe it will benefit all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we write a letter?
Could we ask Tom, you don't have to write a letter, just support.
Could we request the D O T to come in and talk to us?
They won't, they have to do a study first. They have to see if they'll do a study. But yeah, Mike, Mike could write a letter, is the police commission?
My understanding of the police commission?
Police commission writing a letter?
Yes, the police commission's gonna write a letter, and they, they, actually, they are the ones that have to do it because they're the traffic authority.
Right.
But we can write a letter and support.
Yeah, so why don't we?
Sure, I can do that.
When they send their letter up?
Yeah.
Just, just include our letter with it.
Right.
So at least, you know, it both goes in at the same time.
Right.
Can I ask, we're all in favor of it.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's no reason to not request it.
Right. There's every reason to request it.
Yeah. So Mike, can we do that?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll, I'll craft that.
I just wanna make one last observation, or just one last comment, please. It was, Marie had alluded to it earlier, there's been forty-five to fifty accidents since nineteen ninety-five, seven alone is here. But what all of you need to reflect upon and think about is how many near misses and how many unreported accidents, when the police were, or I should say, were not involved in, in any report. Because I, I can't, it's, I can't even count how many times I've seen and witnessed and personally experienced a near miss there. And no matter how careful you are driving, there's every opportunity for something to happen there. So please take that into account, besides the actual numbers of a reported incident, is the number of near misses or incidents that have happened that maybe were not reported. Thank you.
The other thing, Mike, that came up, and I think you might ask the chief again, is maybe there could be a little more police presence there, you know, on occasion, just so people see a police car, or be so often, or whatever. That would, that, you know, to some extent would help, slow down the traffic. That did come up, but you might wanna review that with the chief and then find out too when their letter's going.
Temporary fix, though.
Okay, sure.
All right, next is resignations and appointments.
Mayor, if we could, is, looking for Louisa, yes, Louisa, we, she's here. We had an issue with Toys for Tots, I don't know if, I know Councilman Armond, and Louisa's here to kind of clarify for you what we do here locally and what other groups do. And I thank you, Louisa, for coming tonight. And I thank you, Louisa, for coming tonight.
Um, I'd like to start off by simply saying I am not Bob Nacka. So that should resolve some things, but evidently, Bob Nack is a gentleman, United States Marine Corps, Toys for Tots. Rented a space free of charge on Commerce Drive, I spoke to the gentleman early on in the year. Evidently, there was a story about running out of toys in North Branford. These are separate entities, I run Toy for Tots program strictly for children in Northford, North Branford. Drop off is from November to the beginning of December, the toys are dispersed to children that reside here. And once those toys are given out, there's any access, they go to nonprofit children's agencies like Yale Children's Hospital, Ronald McDonald House, things of that nature. We did not run out of toys, we've always had tremendous community support for not only Thanksgiving, for Christmas, the Adopted Family Program, the Toy for Tots program. That is a separate agency, I did speak to Bob Nack today. He was actually closing today at three, tomorrow at three, and the warehouse was gonna be open to the nineteenth until six. So hopefully, um, he's providing enough access, shouldn't need to receive any more donations, but we are not him.
And Bob is?
We are okay.
Bob is Marine Services Toys for Tots, right?
U.S. Marine Corps Toys for Tots program.
Right, and that services the Greater New Haven area.
And that warehouse is on Commerce Drive this year because they go wherever someone will give them free rent. Because they're providing a service, and it happens to be in a town in North Branford this year. Next year, it could be in West Haven, it could be Hartford, it could be any town, wherever they're gonna get free rental space. Uh, but I think it was like the wording where they just said Toys for Tots.
Yeah, we're live here in North Branford.
Very vague, and everybody thought it was us. It is not us, we are what?
So you are not currently collecting toys, is that correct?
I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah, we did it from the beginning of November to December five, and we dispersed to parents on December seventh, and parents. And I do a grandparent program as well, because we have seniors that live in the communities that are living on fixed income. So I also do it for them, for their grandchildren.
Can you do me a favor, in next holiday season, can you, um, send a letter to Mike so we can get it in our packet? When you start collecting toys?
Sure.
So, like, I, as a council member, am aware of that you're collecting toys?
I do post this, just as a general rule for all programs, it went into the advisor, the Tucata Town Sound, the town's webpage, the town's Facebook page, the senior center newsletter, the police department in the town hall, the libraries. But we can certainly include a letter in the packet for the holiday programs as well.
And, um, so since he's not competing with you, where, uh, you said twenty-one Commerce Drive?
Thirty-one, I believe.
Thirty-one Commerce Drive, okay. And, um, if people can still then, um, donate toys to him?
He serves New Haven County and Middlesex County.
Okay.
I serve Northford and North Branford.
Okay.
So that's a, that's a dis, a significant distinction.
All right, well, if, um, if people wanna donate, you know, I have his phone number here, it's two, two, what?
I posted it.
You did, okay, two oh three four eight four zero five zero two, probably call ahead to make sure he's there.
I did.
But, so, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Louisa.
Next item, we'll move on to resignations and appointments. Appointment of Tricia Mace as alternate planning and zoning commission, term expires five thirty-one, two thousand eighteen.
So, who?
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Next one, Mike, are we moving on that?
Yeah, I think we'll skip over that, come back to it after second session.
We're going to item number twelve, unfinished business discussion in action, review update on delinquent real estate tax accounts.
Our tax collector is here tonight, uh, I would wanna compliment him, he's done a fine job. I think the, when I first got appointed, we had nineteen seriously delinquent accounts, that number's down to two now, or three.
Wow.
I, I require two foreclosures. One was done successfully in Northford several months ago, but the town got over ninety-four thousand dollars in foreclosure sale. And I have another one scheduled for February on this side of town. I hope that we don't have to go through with the foreclosure, but then the debt is very high, so we had to do something. Uh, we only have a, a couple more to work on. One of the larger ones that's still existing, uh, I've talked to their, their attorney at great length yesterday, and he's gonna, said it hopes that they can refinance and save the home. And I wish them, well, if they need some extension, let me know, but I've already instituted the foreclosure. Ken, you did, Ken does a fine job, everyone, I think we ought to thank him. Do you have anything to add?
Um, no, we're, um, there'll be more coming probably after, you know, the Jamie worry, because it's just still a silent time, so. Pat has closed them down rapidly, and it's not been doing very well.
Also, thank the town's taxpayers, we have pretty good, uh, taxpayers that repay, I think, ninety-eight percent every year, that's amazing. And we got good people in town, sharing the burden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Next item is review of unified command group. I know Al Rose put this on, so maybe we could just table it until?
Sure.
He said he couldn't make it tonight, he called me earlier, so we'll just table it. Next is RFP for marketing at fifteen ninety-nine Foxen Road.
I would, uh, like to probably table that, um, issue until the buildings are removed from fifteen ninety-nine. Um, what, is there a timeline with that, Mike?
Yeah, it, it's something that's not gonna happen probably until the end of January or February, because of that ninety-day, uh, period that they've gotta go through in terms of the historical posting, so, um, yeah, this is something that probably, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll monitor that and, and see where they are, but as soon as it's done.
Then we can put that back on.
Yeah, February, March meeting, yeah, put that back on.
Okay, recourse to left hiring freeze for custodial position in the Park and Recreation Department.
Yeah, I prepared a memo for you, uh, there's a custodian that resigned, and, uh, hoping to, uh, fill that position.
This is a part-time position, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the Park and Recreation Department to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Craig Paulson, the custodian.
Okay.
Discussion, roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, we'll move into fire department ordinances, fire rescue billing.
Anthony, sir, can you clarify what this is all about for me?
Those of you that have been here for a couple of years, this is like, uh, a bad penny, it keeps coming back.
More than a couple of years.
Uh, more than a couple of years, several years. What happened in two thousand fourteen, these represented, the fire commission blessed these, endorsed them onto the council, the council endorsed them in theory, to be sent for the town attorney, to be turned into actual ordinances, to come back to support you folks, the public hearing process, and so on down the road. There was a disconnect between the way the town clerk and the town attorney at the time were trying to number the various sections into the town code, and it died, it never got past that point.
And these are ordinances to attach fees to the different services, is that right?
There, there are three particular order, four, three ordinances that are due, and one is an amendment. The fire rescue billing, basically, if you look at your insurance policy now, on the back page, you have something called fire service charge you're paying for. And many towns have opted to bill for that, send a bill to, you know, Anthony has a car insurance claim, get my insurance policy number, send a bill to whoever happens to be nationwide. And the, the duty of this plan is that the town sets the parameters. Anthony himself will never get a bill. It's billed to my insurance company, only if they refuse it, it dies. So it's got a high uncollectible rate, but it's found money. You could probably do like a thirty to forty percent found, you know, in our case, it probably generated about ten to fifteen, maybe twenty thousand dollars a year of money. Yeah, the fire commission thought it was a tool, to replace equipment like first tools, same place asset coming to tax dollar. Second, when fire marshal fees, many towns do that for large-scale projects, things like the Big Y coming to town, or, or school projects, not so much for private, commercial projects. There's a lot of involvement in the fire marshal's law, plan reviews, branford reviews. Uh, many towns charge for different size, for different daytimes, for collisions of commercial structures. We're missing that opportunity as well. The key lock box, basically, you've been to many buildings in town since, uh, roughly two thousand and one, you've been through the process where on the outside of a building, they have a, a key box that says, okay, if the fire alarm goes off, let's say in this building at three o'clock in the morning, each fire apparatus has a tone-activated device that the dispatch center pushes a tone over the airways, opens up a key box, they open up their key, they go into that lock box, and get the key to the building, come in. It determines, A, is it a false alarm? And they can solve it, blow out a dirty head, something like that, or has there gotten a bit of fire? If there's no box in the building, they're left to wait outside and say, okay, should we break the door down, should we not break the door down? So it saves the business owners significantly, from a financial perspective, and it takes the guessing game out, saying, okay, are we gonna wait inside of the building, the flame come through the roof? Or are we gonna go inside and put it out? That's that one. The fourth one, there's an existing ordinance regarding street signs. And what this proposal now is trying to do is to incorporate reflective numbers. You know, drive down the road at three o'clock in the morning, your windshield wipers on, the wipers going, can I tell what number your house is? A lot of times you can't. People have this fancy cursor in the writing, doesn't help us. We need three-inch reflective numbers on your mailbox, so if we're driving down in the middle of a snowstorm, and the windshield wipers are on, it's dark, you wanna see what, how, how's your number is. It's all for publicity, wanna be able to find you in case.
We talked about that a couple of years ago.
It's been picked around for a hundred years.
I thought they were doing that with like, Country Paint Hardware, Eagle Scout.
Eagle Scouts, there was an Eagle Scout from Northford that had done a significant amount of project, uh, workup in Northford. And if you didn't have a, a mailbox, you put a pillar, uh, four-by-four post in front of your house with the numbers on it. So you did make some great strides on that, but a lot of folks, again, have mailboxes with the numbers maybe half off, maybe small. You know, it's gotta be, think of, think of, uh, you know, if you're laying there with a hard sack after a bit, they might be able to find your house. If you're driving home tonight, notice the road, the numbers, see how great the ones reflective numbers are. So we're trying to accomplish that, and an interior lock, a lot of folks have interior locks in this town. Drive up the road, you know, exit house one, two, three, or four, against an interior signage reflective as well, saying this is house number one with an arrow, this is number two. So again, it's trying to find us, you know, find, help us find you in an emergency. So those, those are the four things, and again, so in talking with, with Pat, he said basically, let's just start from square one. Bring him back before the council, have him endorse the concept, Pat will work with Lisa, get him properly encoded into the town code, come back to you folks as a public hearing process, and start to, start from square one again.
So what happens to areas of town where the numbering on the road, and I can think of one area, right on Wilderness Drive by me, is they changed the numbering on one house, but the next house is a, a different number, because their address is actually, their number is for West Pond Road, and then it comes back to Wilderness. So the numbering is screwed up, how does that get changed so that it's consistent?
It's based on what's in the nine-one-one database. So what I would suggest, that person in that, in that funky situation, call nine-one-one, you call dispatch center first. Say, I wanna test out what you're showing in, in your screen for my house. They would call nine-one-one, say, okay, it's coming up as one, two, three, Wilderness Drive. That would be the number that dispatch is gonna get in case of an emergency. I'd use that number on my house, one, two, three, Wilderness Drive, if it's on Leno, whatever happens to be the case. What's in the nine-one-one database that's gonna drive the ship? So that would, I, I would call dispatch in a non-emergency number, say, we're gonna test our, our nine-one-one, what's it come up on your screen as? And that way you would know exactly, so if you had a hard time next day, you know it's gonna come up as one, two, three, Wilderness. That would, I would, in those cases where it's funky like that, and I would use that number on my mailbox, one, two, three, Wilderness, you know, nice three-inch reflective numbers. But that's how you can determine if there's any kind of issue with, you know, whether it's, some houses on the corner, you know, have different numbers, and it's, there, there are many issues. It's okay, the road is many issues, in that the numbers are, you know, out of sequence significantly. So regardless of what the numbering is, as long as it's properly identified by the road and consistent with what's in the nine-one-one database.
So it doesn't matter what their mailing address is then, is what you're saying?
No, it doesn't matter. Because our, when you call nine-one-one, that's gonna pop up on their screen to say what address they think you're at.
Okay.
And that's what you should, that's what's driving them.
Um, Pat, how does this affect your homeowners rate with their, you know, with all the different insurance companies?
I don't know, insurance expert, but it's, obviously, it's increasing coverage, coverage is gonna increase your cost, I would assume.
Cause I mean, people are already paying taxes for these services in town, so how does that affect? Like, could we reach out to some of these other towns that are doing this and see what affects this house?
And you know, Anthony, like?
Yeah, try to see if he has a.
Aren't you overlooking the fact that there's already a claim? I mean, there was a fire, so you're gonna have a claim for the fire.
Yeah.
The fact that the fire department issues a bill for three hundred or five hundred bucks is gonna be negligible compared to the loss you experienced because your garage burned down. Same way with a motor vehicle. So if there's an impact, it's gonna be from the loss.
So I mean, it's the same, what about the police department then, will they respond? I mean, are they gonna charge too? Well, you have a motor vehicle accident, what, what Joe was saying is also true, that you have a loss, so this fee is attached to that claim. Am I correct about that?
You are correct.
Okay, so, you know?
I also understand, now, sort of, you know, perspective, saying, see, the amount of the, the insurance company's gonna pay out more money, so it may affect you down the road, and you, as you renew your insurance. I also, council points, points well taken, in the house fire, where there's, you know, eighty thousand dollars in payments, a five-hundred-dollar bill's not gonna, you know, you know, that much, but I, I can definitely, I have, I have information on.
I mean, I would just, I just would like the information, just to know.
Oh, sure, no, I agree a hundred percent, a hundred percent. You see, if, you know, I experienced in other towns, have they found any kind of feedback from their homeowners, the impact, or, um, maybe we can talk to some insurance agents as well, and get their input as well. And again, the fire rescue fee is, is, you know, is one pot of money, the fire marshal fees, you know, we're just trying to, the fire commission, several years ago, was, was, you know, championing to try to get some additional revenue sources into the town, and, um, it's kinda stalled, as everybody knows. So we're just trying to get that rekindled back into the, I mean, the front burner, and again, the help of the town attorney, that is back for you guys, in a, a format that's pleasing as far as ordinance goes.
Rekindled.
Rekindled?
Rekindled, nice.
And the police department already charges for false alarms if you go over a certain number, that doesn't go to insurance company, that goes to the homeowner.
Yeah, I know, private business.
Yeah.
All right, we'll be hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council agrees to send the attached ordinances to the town attorney for preparation for the public hearing process. Once the documents are in proper form, they should be returned to the town council and formally set up, which shall then formally set a public hearing.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
No.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we'll move on to new business, discussion in action, review of North Branford High School boiler replacement project.
Bill, could you, uh, choose to say anything regarding this? The condition of the boiler?
Don.
Oh, I mean, Don, sorry. Or not?
Well, I wasn't expecting to make a presentation.
No, just, it's, it's, it's under my, upon reviewing the packet, you know, it's, um, now an urgent matter, you know, the boiler situation. So, what's urgent about it now?
Well, we have one boiler operating, and one boiler that might operate for some period of time if we needed it. But we're not, we're, we're not confident in that. And so if the boiler fails, we're talking about putting in a rental steam unit, and however long it takes to pipe that in. And the high school is closed in the meantime. So, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to keep this moving. So, you know, obviously, one option. So, you know, obviously, one option is to do an RFQ and, you know, and, and jump through all those hoops. We got a price of ten thousand dollars, which is a bit above the bid limit, um, from DTC, who had done some work for the town. And this is to prepare, to do the design and prepare the bid specs. We're not talking about not bidding the boiler project. I'm only talking about trying to move forward with the engineering piece.
So how long would RFQ, how long would that process need to take? I mean, couldn't we send out an RFQ that would have a time span of three weeks? Okay, so then sending out an RFQ would only delay you potentially three weeks or two weeks.
Like, I guess the first question before we do the RFQ is we need to discuss funding of the boiler, um, and how the town council would, because I believe that part of the package is probably around a hundred fifty thousand dollars, give or take on there. So since we didn't have it in our budget and it's not a capital, Anthony, have you, according to our little memo that.
Trying to find some pants in the backyard, so I haven't found any yet.
Okay.
Didn't you want any, I got, the, um, that money I referenced to you previously, that, that state grant money. I know the lowest of projects, you cannot use that for education buildings. Uh, part of that, as Mike mentioned, I did ask them about those two projects and have no response back about the police gate or the, um, MBIS generator piece. This one being, uh, obviously, a larger dollar amount, I wanted to check their lesson before we go to proceed with that. And they're not the quickest people to respond. My concern is that it might not be eligible for school projects. So I wanna get clarification on that piece. I mean, that, that's rarely available money that you have in, in the bank already. Aside from that, I'm not sure where we get money, but honestly, at this point in time.
So where did we get the money to award the bid to do the buildings at fifteen ninety-nine?
We are borrowing from ourselves. Look, you understand that when we sell that property, we do complete that money.
Okay, so the, but the discussion lately on that piece has been, let's have public information hearings and if the public decides they don't wanna sell it, then where did that money, then we borrowed from our, we just took out of what fund? The undesignated fund balance or?
Capital project fund. Capital nonrecurring fund would be under, again, that was the premise back in the motion you guys had.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, was, we're gonna expect some costs to do that project. Knocked on the buildings, with some initial, uh, valuations done. And the understanding was, okay, we'll take them out of this four oh one capital nonrecurring project with the understanding at the time that when the project got sold, that fund would be made whole and the profit would live there as a capital project. You're also a hundred percent threat that there's, you know, a waiver in the school of thought as to what happens with that property. If we, if we do choose not to sell it, then we have a hole.
Then we gotta figure out how to refund that money.
Correct.
Okay. That's that.
Okay.
So we're.
So we don't know.
Well, well, there, there are two things in the capital budget for, that there's a hundred thousand dollars that we have allocated two, three years ago for a facility study townwide. And that money has just been sitting there and nothing has been done with that. So that's one possible area. There is also twenty-five thousand dollars in this year's CIP budget for plans to draw up, uh, specs for a new, renovate as new high schools. So that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which would possibly, we could use, correct? If, if, to move forward with, with the boiler?
Well, that, that first hundred thousand you referenced is part of that same pot of the state aid money. So I need clarification, that goes back a couple of years ago. That was one of the first projects we took out of that, that state grant money. So again.
It wasn't our money, it wasn't money that we.
It was the state grant money.
Okay.
So the, the, the quest I made to the OPM was to use it for that school, or the townwide facility study. So I would hit with letters to OPM saying, okay, first of all, A, school projects allowed, and we wanna discontinue that project and move it to here. I would also caution you, there's a memo, I think, later on in your packet from, um, the town in New Naryard and Burgman and final cost. Even with this year's little sliver of money, we're still some hundred fifty thousand dollars short. Uh, again, where to get this money from? We borrow a lot of that shares, town aid, rural program, and the university this year. Or we can find some money, these are the possible that are kicking around. So keep that in the back of your mind, if you try to back up that project as well, after there's money, you know, you need it up there. So I would say, on, on the hundred thousand dollars, you're right, it's still out there. I need concurrence from the state that I can use that money for an education building.
Okay. All right. Well, I would like to, I, I mean, I, I think it would be money well spent to get the, the drawings for what the, the boiler would be. And I know John Florio explained at the last meeting, they already have the pad there so that what they would be looking at are the, I guess it's stackable boilers, so that they could, once it's designed, there's boilers that are there and they can pipe them. Once we go forward with the project, they can bring them up to just the point before connection, if I remember what he said correctly.
Get it to the point where you could probably do this within a couple of days.
Right, so that if that one boiler they have, which heats ninety percent of the school, goes down and we've moved ahead with the project, all they have to do is pipe it in and they're back up and running on there. Uh, the biggest question is where do we get the money from? But I think to do, to go and do a bid and get the drawings done so that we have the drawings in place and that we can go out to bid with it, um, we can take it to that point. And my suggestion would be is that, that those drawings, that cost of whatever the bid might be, would be taken from the twenty-five thousand dollars that is designated right now for the, um, Board of Ed for the drawings for the high school.
Right, right.
Because we're not proceeding with that this year, as far as I know. The consensus of the council is that we're not moving forward this year. So I would suggest that we would take the money for the drawings and get that part of it done to keep the project going. And in the meantime, keep exploring as to where we will get the funding to, for the capital project on there, but not to stop the project at all.
And once, once that piece of it is done, we'll also have a budget for an estimate as opposed to just a, on the back of a napkin estimate.
Right, because I, I believe the, the one estimate we got like in August, that was equipment only, that one oh five?
Yeah, it was, it was about, it was all a hundred thousand for equipment only and I think a hundred thirty-five installed.
Um, so that's kind of where I remembered the number of somewhere around a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Right. And was that to include the gym or not to include the gym?
Now, the way John Florio explained it at our last meeting was it was kind of a two, a two-phase project. Is that the existing boiler, um, would stay operational and because the gyms are by steam and that boiler would generate the steam to.
Gym actually has steam heaters where the rest of the building has a heat exchanger. So you're using the steam to heat water and you're circulating hot water through the rest of the building. So if we took that piece of it and we said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna convert that to a new hot water system. So instead of making steam and then making hot water with the steam, we just make hot water. The gyms would still have to run off the steam for the time being. But at least if you had a failure, you're talking about not having gyms as opposed to not having heat anywhere in the building.
So that would be my suggestion. Do we need a motion if we wanna go forward with it and where the funding for that? How long would it take to do an RFP or RFQ to put a bid out to?
I think the first question is, is if, if DTC is on the state, um, if it's a state contractor and then it would just, there's no delay. If they're actually already certified as a state contractor and is to DAS, then it's just piggybacking off of the state bid, there's nothing they need to do. They just, you know, follow the rules for the state contract. But I don't know if DC, DTC is on that.
Were they the ones that did work for the town, I thought?
Yes, that was free. We didn't pay them, we haven't paid them anything.
Yeah, they did the drawing, the analysis of the police.
But I think that would be the first step. And then to answer your question, if, if, if they're not, then it, you know, as quickly as we can put it together. I, I think by ordinance, I think we have a ten day minimum.
But the last state contract bid quote that we went on, when we ended up going out to bid and saved eight thousand dollars. I know this is a much smaller amount that we're talking about here. So that, so I'm hesitant to just say, well, they're on the state contract bid, so.
Right, Mike, you started to say, could happen as quickly as ten days?
I think, I, I think our minimum is that we, we advertise for a ten day turnaround, a minimum ten days, so.
How long would it take to develop it if you had to develop it?
I think it's develop, I mean, I, or, well, I, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a request or RFQ versus RFP for, for design engineering services. So I'm not sure how far along the Board of Ed is, but whatever they have.
Well, RFQ doesn't necessarily even have, I mean, it may, it may have costs associated with it, but it's a request of qualifications as opposed to proposals. So you can pick someone who's not necessarily the least expensive because they have the best qualifications to do the job.
Is there anything that precludes us from doing that simultaneously? Give us an RFP with your qualifications.
No, you can, you can make it an RFP. The problem is if you make it an RFP, then you're basically bound by the low bidder.
Well, I, I thought there was something with low bidder, but, or with.
Well, at least the highest responsible bidder.
Right, with discretion, right.
Qualified, the lowest qualified, right?
Right, I thought that's, that it's not automatically the lowest bid.
We're not beholden to the lowest bidder, I don't think.
Do you disagree with that, Don?
No, that's true. You know, again, I guess, you know, my only concern is, I mean, for example, you have one agency in the town who has a bid limit that's above ten thousand dollars. So I was hoping that we could just, you know, keep this one moving.
Well, we would keep it moving by going out to bid.
Yeah.
That, that we're not letting the project die. I, I mean, I, I'm just leery of not following that.
I concur, I concur with.
That thing of seventy-five, you know, our bid, you know, our threshold is seventy-five hundred dollars. And I know it's a little, it's twenty-five hundred dollars over, but if we keep making exceptions, then why do we have that?
And not only that, but this could cost us more if we end up not going out to bid. We don't know, you know, what then the potential bids would be.
Don, is there some urgency, we don't know the urgency?
Is this potential the boiler going down?
I mean, that's, you know, again, you, we're, we're running on high, hey, our high school, our flagship building on one very old boiler that has had leakage in the past year.
So we've, we've gone through.
But it's my understanding that this has, this, this has been an issue like at the end of last, it got through last heating season and we went into this, so that was March, April when it ended. And we didn't hear about it during budget season. And it wasn't brought to our attention that, or put into your capital request in, into your budget. And, and then when we had our meeting last month, it kind of came to light as, oh, we only have one boiler and now this is like urgent that we do this, when there was all these months in between when we didn't hear anything about it.
Well, and, you know, I, I will say, it hasn't been that we weren't, haven't been doing anything in those months, in months in between. You know, we did have people look at it, we, we have been trying to develop a plan. I don't have an engineering staff.
Right, no, I, I.
To turn to and say, do this.
No, but I'm saying, as far as the council being aware that this is something that we should have been looking at in the budget process, you know, to get it into the CIP, into our CIP budget for this year on there. Like, when we went through the whole budget process, we didn't hear about it until this fall.
Well, the problem is at that point in time, we weren't sure whether the boiler could be repaired successfully with enough certainty to continue to depend on.
In, in what way?
We then became convinced that that was not a good plan.
So that evaluation constitutes the only thing that differs from the status of the boiler from last year at this time?
Well, no, I mean, last year at this time, we were doing work on the boiler, but the, the work was done. One of the things we looked at was, you know, should we replace sections in that boiler? As I said, you know, I mean, I, I'm doing all this from memory because I really didn't come here to make the presentation tonight. So, you know, I don't have any notes, facts, times, I just don't.
So when, and, and kind of making a synopsis of this, not expediting it and going out, you know, developing an RFP, RFQ and sending that out, you're potentially delaying the drawings, uh, being developed by twenty days. Right? Okay. I would endorse, we, we just have to follow our procedure and we don't make an exception. And if, you know, we go down, then we have to rent the unit, you know, and heat the building, but twenty days.
Well, I mean, the, but the bigger part of that is we still haven't identified how we would put a new boiler in there anyway.
Oh, we're gonna pay, but we, the very first step though is developing the drawings.
Exactly.
So we have to go that far.
Right.
And in the meantime, we have to have some serious discussions, if we're gonna find a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
But let's first get the urgency of the drawings.
Yeah.
Right, and just go forward.
RFP.
Just do an RFP, RFQ.
Let's make a motion to, um.
Okay.
Go out for an RFP.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that, um, we go out on an RFP? What's the difference between RFP and RFQ?
Request for qualif, RFQ, request for qualifications.
Yeah, you're doing a request. Yeah, what it is to the P.
Yeah, P, yeah.
Right.
So we'll do an RFP for design, work for the, uh, design work for the heating system at NBHS.
I second that.
Yeah. Let's get it started.
Yep.
Any further discussions? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armond?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Next item is, um, BOE bank account as of ten thirty-one sixteen.
This is the item that dates back to when we used to have a finance committee. The finance committee at the time requested from the Board of Ed quarterly updates on the, uh, non tax payer accounts. I have an idea of what the numbers were. The last time we just gave them was during the summertime, but honestly, I crap hit on the agenda for July meeting. So this one's through October thirty-first and, uh, can invite them very readily if there's any questions they have.
Next item is contingency transfer, transfer.
There was a new, new, your desk tonight, make sure that you have the one, um.
It's in your folder, it's at, uh, very top of the revise.
Town clerk vault air conditioning unit number should be seventy-nine sixteen. So the two items on there are the, obviously, the town clerk vault air conditioning unit that has been placed. Costs a seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, work is done in house by Public Works. And tactical communication, that was the work on antenna repair, that's the open house we say, at a cost of seven thousand nine a week. For total fifteen weeks.
I'll make the motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate reserve or contingency account number one oh one dash four seven oh three dash seven six zero dash zero 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 and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purposes. Town clerk vault and the tactical communication antenna repair.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armond?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Next item is financial report as of November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
The financial report we have in front of you in November remains unremarkable. The revenue almost identical is identical to last year, forty-seven point six percent. Expenditure side, it's a percent or two, ten and a half lower. Uh, no departments are over expended as of this time. And, uh, things are going on track. The last page is the annual, the monthly update on the self-insurance reserve of balance at end of November, about million one in. The last page is the annual, is the monthly update on the self-insurance reserve, uh, balance at the end of November, about $1,001 in there. Again, I hope to have the person from HCC here before you folks in January to discuss the whole insurance topic. Any questions?
Financial report, health insurance reserve as of November 30th. Okay, tax returns. A move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Joe, make the motion in a nice second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armond?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Your next item is citizen statements and petitions.
Who's doing the RFQ?
You?
You.
Me?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I know.
Okay. You are authorized.
According to the letter we got today, you're in charge.
He's so happy he can.
Okay, next item is executive session.
I make a motion to move to executive session. For this, with.
Oh, right.
Town manager?
And Lauren.
And Lauren. For discussion concerning appointment of recreation supervisor.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armond?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yeah.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?